I'm gonna call this a regular meeting of the Rock Ridge School Board to order. There's a binder labeled "Public Copies of Board Materials" at the table as you walked in. Meeting agendas are also available to the public on RRPS.org. Please rise with a pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule call, with the record indicate that Director Bonner and Director Rudden are both unable to be here tonight. They're both out of town. So, rolling along, can I get a motion for the agenda?
I'll move.
Motion by Carter Bell. Support by Lauder. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
With the additions.
Well, we're gonna do that. We're gonna put those in the consent. Yeah. Visitor input. I didn't have anybody sign up ahead of time. Anybody like to talk? Okay, consent agenda. We have three to add, or two to add, one to edit. So, I think we shall have these in front of us. Shelly Babarakhi, I will put at 4.18. This is a new flyer.
For what position or?
LPN.
Okay.
To replace one that just recently resigned. We will, there's 4.19 will be out-of-state travel for Stephanie. And then, there's an edit. Uh, which one was this?
Sarah Steele.
Yes, Sarah Steele. She was 4.4. So, the hire date was incorrect. It should be September 8th. And the prorated salary, we all have it all.
Yep.
That's okay.
Yep.
61,267 should be her, should be her salary.
And that would stay 4.4.
Yes, 4.4, correct.
Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll move.
Motion by Lauder.
Okay.
Second by Jody Westby. Any discussion?
I'm just, well, I'm just wondering, like, as far as clarification that this has all been budgeted for? And not, like, any additions to our budget?
Yes, Director, none of these are additions.
Okay.
These are ones that you have already budgeted where you're having staff move around. So, that's what these are.
Some have left and were, yeah.
Okay, so nothing?
My question was similar. I just wanted to check and see if the grade 5 through 8 math interventionist, if that is paid for through the AdSIS grant?
Yes, you're okay on that.
And then, the out-of-state travel, like, do we have a budget for that? Or what is?
That one, my understanding is that one is not costing you anything.
Oh, okay.
But because it's out-of-state travel, we're asked to approve all out-of-state travels. That one will not cost you anything, not even mileage.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
That was my question.
All good questions. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 5.1, update on volunteers in education and the Rock Ridge Public Schools. You have a flyer here.
Okay, coach?
Yep.
Yep, please.
Okay.
Just state your name.
Okay. Hi, I'm Teresa. My last name is Steven Esha. I work with volunteers in education. We provide tutors to students who are referred to us by their teachers who need some extra support in their academic progress. We provide learning support to students K-12, although most of our students, about 90 to 95% of the students we serve are in grades K-5. And most of the students that we provide services for need support in early literacy or intermediate reading and math. Those are generally kind of where most of our energy goes. But we do provide learning support to kids who are in the middle grades and high school. And we do provide support beyond literacy reading and math. Most of our tutors are well-educated. Almost all of them have bachelor's degrees. Many of them have advanced learning degrees. I can't tell you right now, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't have the percentage right off the top of my head. We have many high-quality high school students working with us who provide excellent tutoring to their peers. We have found that working with high school kids who are in the National Honor Society are amazing tutors. They are able to easily make connections with students their age or slightly younger than themselves. And they, I think the biggest benefit is that they most recently took these courses. So, whereas it's a challenge sometimes to find an adult who, regardless of education, finding an adult who feels comfortable tutoring a 7th grader in math can be a challenge. Finding a junior in high school who excels in math and loves math can provide amazing service to that 7th grader, to provide some support in math. So, we recruit, we have, last year we had about 55 tutors working with us. Most of those were adults. I think we probably had five or seven maybe overall of our nine schools that were students. And we, again, we found that they were a great match for certain kids. And our adult tutors, we matched with other learners. What we do, when teachers refer their kids to us, we ask them questions. What are you looking for in content area? What time of the day, what day of the week do you need services? And what are you looking for in a tutor? At the same time that we're doing that, we're recruiting tutors. And we're asking tutors, what do you feel comfortable tutoring? What are your skills? What are you bringing to the table? What can you offer us? Do you have a background in math and sciences that's especially strong? Were you a retired teacher? Do you feel extremely comfortable in early literacy? We ask these sorts of questions as well as, when are you available days of the week, times of the day? What grade levels are you comfortable tutoring? So, we take that information from our tutors. We take this information from teachers who are referring kids to us. And each building has a site coordinator who matches, these are the tutors that Teresa's told me we have on hand for my building. These are the teachers who are making referrals. And here's the list of kids and what they need. And now, I'm going to find a good match. Some of it is based on availability. A lot of it is based on the skills that the tutors have and what they say they're comfortable tutoring. A really important part of our program is the development of a strong relationship between tutors and students. Because if kids are being referred to us because they need extra support in the academics, that often can be one reason that kids might struggle with self-esteem and self-confidence. Low self-esteem, low self-confidence gets in the way of how you engage in your learning community, whether it's the classroom, the lunchroom, the overall school. It makes you sometimes want to put your head down instead of up and engaged with those around you. It keeps you from wanting to raise your hand in class. Because what if you say something that others, what if you say something stupid? You become afraid to engage. And so, with that in mind, when we start working with our tutors at the beginning of the year, important part of our pre-service tutor training seminar every year is this focus on the importance of relationships. And we need to get to know, our tutors need to get to know our kids and establish a strong and trusting relationship. So, that that student feels safe saying, "I don't get this." Not wanting to put their head down and not respond when the tutor says, "How can I help you?" But the student feels secure enough in that tutoring session to say, "I don't understand this, and I know you care about me, and I can reveal my vulnerability, and you're not going to think less of me. You're going to help me." And with that relationship in place, learning improves. And so, that is the foundation on which we build everything, is that relation, that foundational relationship between tutors and students. We work with kids in nine schools. Three of those schools are in your district. We work with students in Laurentian, at North Star, and at Parkview. The handout that I, it's a two-sided handout. The one with the boxes is just more of a promotional flyer. But the other one shares some information about the impact we made last year with our students. But I wanted to break that down a little bit for you because it's telling you, this is how many tutoring sessions happen in all nine of our schools. But what I want you to know is that we broke that out a little bit. And last year, just last year alone, for the three elementary schools in Rock Ridge that I just mentioned, our tutors provided 1,160 tutoring sessions. Our tutors provided 538 hours of tutoring support. And on average, our tutors served 198 kids a month from these three schools. So, the difference, the potential that we have to make a difference with these learners is immense. Our tutors are committed and they care. They're knowledgeable. They care enough to go to our training to learn best practices in reading and math for tutoring. Our consultants are from the Northeast Service Co-op and work very closely with us to make sure that the content they're sharing with our tutors can translate in the classroom or translate into that tutoring session with that student and align with what the districts are hoping to do with the academic standards in Minnesota. So, we feel like we have an opportunity to make a great impact. The challenge for us is for me to quantify that for you, that at the beginning of the year, 33% of these students were achieving proficiency in reading at 3rd grade. And at the end of the year, because of us, this is their level of proficiency. I can't give you that information because we're one small part of what the whole district is doing. We're one small part of what the school is doing. We're one tiny part of what that classroom teacher is doing. We're a good part. I know we make a difference, but the data's more qualitative. And you can read that on the bottom half of the sheet where you can see, this is what teachers told us. They told us that in the classes in which their students received Vine tutoring, they thought that they were seeing improvement in that content area for these students. That they saw self-confidence and self-esteem increasing. They saw classroom engagement increasing. They saw that this student was lighting up when the tutor walked in the room. They saw that this relationship with the tutor made a positive difference for the child. So, that's all qualitative data. I think it's important, and I want you to hear it, but I also want you to know I recognize that last week test scores came out. And I can't tell you our part of any piece of the difference we make quantitatively. I can tell you qualitatively, I know we're making a difference. And I think that one of the biggest differences comes from that relationship that our tutors create with the kids and how the kid maybe lifts their head just a little bit higher when they're engaging in the classroom and walking down the hall. So, we're really excited that we have tutors working in the three elementary schools in Rock Ridge. We are so appreciative of the opportunity that you've given us to do, to provide this service. We hope to continue doing that. And we always invite feedback. My contact information is on both sides of this document. If there's something that you have, anything you have a question about after I leave tonight, any thoughts or ideas, any concerns, please feel free to reach out because we're always looking to improve our program and make a big difference for kids. Does anybody have a question?
Are these all local volunteers in our community?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yep. Yes, they are. And so, we, and we, we work with all five schools in St. Louis County and Mount Ironview. And those tutors also are all local to those areas. Now, we have some tutors, I can think of one, who she tutors in two of your schools and she also tutors in Mount Ironview. So, there's, you know, there is maybe some crossover. But by and large, I, I teach, last week we were at all the open houses and folks signed up to be tutors. And generally, if they're walking in the door with their student at North Star, their interest is tutoring at North Star. So, generally, it's very much related to.
And it's all voluntary, the no, there's, so do you get grants to kind of hold here?
Yes. I would say the largest part of my job is writing those grants. That's my job. We have a coordinator in each building who, as I said earlier, makes that connection between our tutors and the students being referred by the teachers. And they're also sort of the liaison between me and the school. Those site coordinators get paid a small amount. They get paid $20 an hour. And they work maybe one or two hours a week. But other than that, it's, it's, yeah, the volunteers are all there volunteering.
That's amazing, yeah.
It is amazing. We're really, I came on board in January of 2023. Our program had been shut down for nearly three years at that point. The first year, two years, we were down because of COVID restrictions. And schools were reluctant to have visitors come in the building. And some of our tutors are of an age that at that time, there was a higher risk, or there was thought to be a higher risk for certain age groups. And so, some of our older tutors really were hesitant to go into the building. So, for two years due to COVID restrictions, we were not providing services. A third year was, unfortunately, we did not provide programming. And that was due to the sudden loss, one of the executive director just before he passed away suddenly. And that made a really big difference and hit us for another year of programming. When I started in January of 2023, my task from the board was to get five schools up and running by the beginning of fourth quarter. Rock Ridge wasn't part of that first initial group. It was four of St. Louis County and, and the Mount Ironview District. All five of those schools started on day one of fourth quarter in 2023. But we had 12 volunteers and we helped a total of 50 kids. And you can see now by looking at this handout, we have 50-plus volunteers and we are serving around 600 kids a month. So, our growth has been rapid. And it's been really exciting to be a part of.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, and our National Honor Society kids do participate too, sometimes in helping with the program as well because they have so many volunteer service hours that they need to do. And some of them do it through there.
Yeah, I know my daughter did it. I don't know if she did it through you or what, but I knew she was tutoring at the school last year. So, it just kind of clicked, like, oh, yeah, she was doing that. But I have to say, I do think it's a wonderful program. And myself, I, in high school, benefited from a community member who tutored me at, at the school in math, I'll be honest, in math, not my strong suit, for a time being. And Howard shaped me, and she still is in my life. Like, it was a beautiful thing, and I'm just thankful for that. So, I think a lot of good can come from this, and it's needed. It's needed in our community. So, thank you for that. I just do have one kind of question, though. Do these volunteers, are they, like, background checked?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We follow the protocols of the three districts within which we work. And so, we do, we do exact, we use trusted employees, which as far as I know, right up through last year, trusted employees is a third-party vendor that Rock Ridge was using. It's definitely what St. Louis County, Mount Ironview use. I would have to confirm if trusted employees is still used here. But we run, we do the same checks that are asked, that, that the district asks of all of their nonlicensed staff. So, all the bus drivers, people who are the paraprofessionals, anybody who's nonlicensed. The licensed staff, I believe, in all three places has a slightly different process and a different timeline. Our tutors, I have tutors who, this is the fourth year now that they've been working with me, or third, I'm sorry. And every year, they do a background check because that's what the district's required. So, we check all 50 states for criminal search and for sexual assault or sexual predator database as well. So, because when we first, when we first came into the schools in January of 2023, or literally when I started, actually, the tutors were in in late March, early April, what teachers were telling me, when I went around the five schools and got to know the teachers individually, what I was hearing is, these kids are coming back from COVID with needs beyond learning. Learning loss is real and it's severe, and we're, it's a problem for us, and we appreciate your help for that. But they also said, almost with a louder voice, "Some of these kids need a safe, trusting adult. And the vehicle of sitting down and reading a book with them is perfect." They need somebody at the school. They have all of us, all, we all care about this student. But if this student makes a connection with somebody different, if they, for whatever reason, aren't connecting with their classroom teacher or their bus driver or the person in the lunchroom or their para, we are one more opportunity to put a safe, trusting adult in the path of that child. And maybe that connection can make that difference for that student to feel like somebody really cares.
Excellent.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And please use my contact information to follow up with any questions.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming today. Okay, 5.2, Laurentian Elementary Principal's Report. Ms. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Teresa's coming to talk to the Laurentian staff Wednesday after school. But our coordinator for the Vine program is Carleen Leesman in the building. And in our daily bulletin, we have a referral form where teachers can go on and fill out the information to get students in our Vine program. And it, like she said, it is so vital for our students and our families to have that service. So, we really appreciate it.
We love being there. Thank you.
I was gonna start off with enrollment. We have 465 students at Laurentian currently right now. And remember, we're a three-section school. So, if we have 75 in a grade, that means we have about 25 in each, each grade, each class, excuse me. Our lowest grade is, right now, is kindergarten, 58 kids. So, a little bit far from 75, but in kindergarten, that's okay to have 19 and 20 in a class. First grade has 64 kids. Our second grade has 73, so they're close to 75, almost 25 in each class. And then, third grade is 64. Fourth grade is 62, wonderful numbers, 20, 21, 21 in a class. Fifth grade is the same, 62. So, 20, 21, and 21 in a class. And our largest grade is sixth grade with 82 kids. So, we have a couple 20, 28 in there, and our lowest one is a 26. So, really good student-to-teacher ratio. Except for sixth grade's a little bit larger, but still very manageable. We don't have any four-year-olds in our program or in the building this year. As you know, we made that transition. And our four-year-olds are going to Parkview. And it's always really nerve-wracking of, how are we gonna get these four-year-olds over to Parkview? And how are we gonna get them back? And Shannon Kush Jeffrey, our childhood, early childhood coordinator, had really good plans and details, and it's, it's worked out very well. We invite them into the gym in the morning. If they get there before 8, between 7:30 and 8, we have two adults in there supervising. At about 8 o'clock, we take them outside to the bus, and the bus takes off. And then, on the way back, we have an adult with the kiddos riding from Parkview to, and they're the last bus at the end of the bus lineup. And when they pull up, it's about 2:40 at the end of the day. And we have a couple adults go and join the para that's on the bus with them. And we, one takes the parent pickup kids, and the other two just kind of take the rest of them and get them onto their bus. So, it's, it's going very well. We haven't lost any preschoolers or anything like that. So, that's working really well. We always are trying to make continuous improvements with our busing just to make sure we don't have a lot of backup up there with our parent pickup and the dismissal of high school students and parent pickup. And it's worked out very well. I've been out there every day, and at 2:55, the kids that get picked up are released at 2:45. And at 2:55, all of the parents are gone with, that are picking up kids. And at 2:55 is that timing, that's when our bus, our kids that ride the bus come out. So, our parent pickup have picked up all the kids. And at 2:55, the kids are out, coming onto the bus. And they're on the bus for about 10 minutes. At 3:05, they head down to the high school to pick up some other kids. So, it's, it's working really, really well. We haven't had any huge backups. And I haven't heard anything negative about the roundboat. I think it's gone well. I've just heard positive things that it seems to be going well. So, hopefully, you're not hearing anything negative. So, it's been a successful six days of school last week and plus today. I also wanted to mention that from last year, our Glow Run fundraiser that the PTA put on, it was such a huge success. If you remember, we had the $30,000 fundraisers. So, our PTA has been busy, you know, scheduling extra events for our kids. And so far, I know of two events that they've scheduled. In October, they're having an Earth, Orbit Earth Expo, which is an astronomy experience. So, a company is coming here to share with our students the moon and the earth and some different experiments that they'll have. And then, in April, they've scheduled somebody from the Twin Cities to come up to do a presentation, and it's called Sustainable Safari. So, they're gonna be, bring some, like, four or five animals that are in the safari and do a little educational program with our students in April. So, that's just two of them that are so far that are on the books for this year. And we will be doing that fundraiser again, just so you know. And then, our sixth graders always attend our Hibbing STEM Showcase. And so, they'll be heading to that. It's in Hibbing the first Friday in October. And our fifth graders will be attending Starbase. That was a little iffy. We didn't know if legislation, with legislation, if it was gonna pass the funding that we received. And it did go through. So, we are sending our group of students, fifth-grade students for a week to Starbase in Duluth. And that's scheduled for the end of October. And then, just regarding the REED Act legislation that came out a few years ago, last summer, as you know, all of our teachers at the elementary level were trained in OLA, structured literacy. That was about 60 hours worth that we did over the summer. And now, part of the REED Act is that we are to provide our paraprofessionals training in structured literacy as well, which I think is fantastic. It's not gonna be the full is fantastic. It's not gonna be the full-in-depth course like the sixty hours worth, but we are required as a district to train our paraprofessionals in eight hours with structured literacy. And I just think that paraprofessionals, they're so vital to our students' education. And every interaction that they have with the students is important and it is a teaching opportunity for them. And so to give them the knowledge and the background and the tools and strategies to help reinforce what the teacher's teaching in the classroom, I think is excellent. They need that training. So we did already four hours of the training before school started. And the last four, we're gonna get in during Staff Development Days coming up. So we have four more hours to train them. We've also talked about even having our volunteers being trained in that. Have you heard about that, Teresa?
Yes, in fact, so when we were recruiting tutors this year, I asked them, are you interested in reading to kids and listening to kids read? Are you, separate question, are you interested in providing early literacy support, give solo support to for our trainings? And so we are, I have right now a dozen tutors who have said that they want to do that. And we are training on October twenty-ninth and December tenth over at Northeast Service Co-op for that specific literacy piece so that we can provide that early literacy support right alongside what your early literacy teachers are doing.
Yeah, it's really good. It's the most, I mean, for this training, I was excited. I'm like, I'll do this training because I think it is just so important for them to have that knowledge to work with kids. That early literacy is really important with the phonics and phonemic awareness and all of that. So the more that we can help support the teachers in the classroom because the goal is, every student has to be at grade level at the end of the year. So reading at grade level. So that takes a whole village. It takes everybody, not just the teacher. So. And the Department of Ed is even coming out with resources for families as well. So I've been on top of that, that I wanna be able to give our families the information to, to help support it at home as well. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that this summer, we had our solar panels installed on top of the Laurentian Elementary. And there is a curriculum that comes with it. And our fifth-grade science teacher, Mrs. Brufeld, is, has a redo of project-based learning opportunity for the students to take place with these solar panels. And they're not quite up and running yet, I don't believe, because we just, we had just received an email that they're, that they're up in there and they're installed. And there's seven hundred and twenty-six panels that are up there on top of the roof. But it's really not fully functioning quite yet. But as soon as they are, we will be like looking at that data with our fifth-grade students so that they understand what that, you know, what a solar panel does and how we're getting energy from it. And hopefully, I think the goal was that we would provide electricity to other areas around us so that it would kind of like bring in a little bit of income. Is that correct, Dr. Schmidt?
That's a dream.
That's a dream.
I like it.
But at least providing the electricity for our school facilities is what I think is the goal is. So, but it's kind of nice to get the kids involved and to be able to see them and how it operates. I think it's a good career exploration for them to be a part of.
Very good.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, moving along here. Five point three, Rock Ridge Funding Letter from I triple R. I arrange resources. This is just a letter from them. Want to tell us how much they've given us? Is that correct?
Yep, members of the board, Director Yuan, this is just a letter showing amount of money. The I triple R has sent this out to area schools. And part of this is to let schools and the community and the public know that your tax dollars are at work because that's in essence what these are. These are dollars in lieu of taxes, property taxes. So they are tax dollars. And so this letter simply shows how much money we have received. The big one, of course, was the construction of all the buildings when we consolidated and merged together. And there was some other money along the way, but the big one was that, and to this day, you still are in Rock Ridge. You are the shining example of a school district who did cooperate, who did work with another district, another entity to receive these funds. So this, at this point, you don't need to act. This was more of an FYI to you.
And thank you to them.
Thank you, Card. All right. Good to know. It's good to see in black and white. Any questions on that one? No? Okay. Five point four, the superintendent.
Three things to bring up to the board. First one is September is School Board Recognition Month. So MSBA always has a month where school board members are to be recognized or celebrated. So this is mostly for the audience and those watching on TV, is that these folks should be recognized. It's voluntary. It is way more difficult than what it appears, sitting on your sofa armchair, wherever you are, because it's easy to make suggestions and make ideas go as far as what you think should be done. It's way more difficult when you're sitting behind these chairs because these board members represent everyone in the district. They do not represent a single town. They do not represent a sliver of this or sliver of that. They represent all of the kids. And that's how they take their job and they take it seriously. So if you see a board member, thank them. It is a difficult job and we do appreciate them. So School Board Recognition Month, here it is. Second thing to let you know about, but I'm gonna shorten mine because Angie already mentioned it, roundabout. It's working well. I've gone through it various times. I have not received a single complaint about the roundabout. Nothing. It's gone extremely well. And so it's perfect. It's working well.
I have not heard, since it's opened up, I have not heard a whole lot about it, other than some, some issues about construction, you know, that direction or that direction, but nothing necessarily about the roundabout. So that's, that's great.
It's only gonna get better as they can finish the project. It's gonna be, it's only gonna get better.
I have to say, every year at the beginning specifically, I hear a lot of, lot of negative about the traffic. This year, nothing. It was, it's going very smoothly. And even coming into the school and everything, I've just heard a lot of positives. So thankful for that. It's a good thing.
And there's another one coming next year, but it's coming from Highway fifty-three by White Cedar Drive. So that one's gonna be closer to us. It's not gonna affect Highway fifty-three traffic, but there will be a smaller roundabout closer between Slumberland and White Cedar Drive. So look forward to that one. Last thing, first days of school went very smooth. I was in all the buildings. Procedures were working. Kids were going where they're supposed to be. Teachers were doing a great job. Parents, custodians had those buildings whipped into shape. It really was a very, very smooth opening in all of the elementaries and in the high school. I've literally heard almost nothing negative about any, anything happening in any of the schools. So the first days of schools went really well. And I just wanted you to know that. And that's it for my superintendent update.
Most transportation went on with buses and stuff. Good?
It went probably the smoothest it's ever gone for a while because now we've got, Bob Boss has got a lot of those kinks out with the routes, combining them, merging them, boundaries and everything else. So we had a few situations. We took care of them. Bob Boss took care of them mostly. And it's really going fairly well. And we were able to, we had some requests, we were able to accommodate and do some pickups differently, got, getting some permission from some people where buses could go. And that helped.
Good.
I also wanna thank you for attending and speaking at the sulfate standard public comment last week. So, so you're in the paper. And I think it was very important that you were there. And I thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
So, anything else from Dr. Pitt?
No.
Okay, five point five, moving along. Treasurer's report. Can you get a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Wesby?
Second.
Second by Wesby. Any discussion?
I do have one question, and I suppose I should have gotten answered, but there is an employee in here that had travel. And I'm wondering if that, is that something that we had pre-approved? Or who approves that? And just wondering what that travel was about. And I guess we can improve it, but I want to just get more clarification on that.
So if you send me the email, who the employee is, I can give you the info on it. But the travel things would come through me and I would approve them. We have cut significantly down on them because that was part of the budget. There is some kind of travel that's in some people's contract. And we are, not mine, but we're, some of that we're doing because it has to happen. So, but we greatly reduced it.
Okay, thank you.
Could you email?
Yes, I'll email you. Thank you. I'll do that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Six point one, consider approval of online learning platform. Are we gonna hear a presentation from Scott? This was tabled and now it's brought back to us. So if you had some questions, then you could enlighten us.
One of the questions we had to look at is, does the program integrate with School ogy? So Bill Bryson had a meeting last week and we found it could integrate with School ogy so we could use that as a grading platform and do everything like all of our other schools do. And I just wanted to be clear that we're doing this because I believe we can do it better with our teachers and our schools. And our goal is to get some of the ninety-seven who have already left back into Rock Ridge Public Schools. So that's my ask, is to approve it for one year so we can try it with this program and then reevaluate at the end of the year.
Wouldn't take much, I mean, to cover the cost. I mean, only handful of students will help pay for this, right?
Yes.
And it's just a trial for a year. So I've, I got a couple of questions. What grades are we, are we gonna have, just is it gonna be high school? Is it gonna be, who will do the online learning?
It'll be six twelve right away. We'll be able to have that six twelve option.
Okay.
Down the road, when we, when I come back and present for a, like a long, like a three-year plan, we would eventually like to have it all the way through with all of our schools. Because there are elementary students that, that have gone online already.
And do we have an idea of what, what we're, what we're not getting by them going to PSEO and, you know, how, with the ninety-seven, what we're losing compared to what we would be gaining with having the online here as a school?
If we had roughly all ninety-seven back in our district, a million dollars. Say yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have some questions. How many programs did you look at? Like, you know, and I'm assuming, and who made these decisions? Was it, it was you and it was Bill? Or was it like a team of people looking at it?
There's, there's like four major providers out there. And just so you know, in my last district, I helped start an online school, so I'm pretty familiar with them all.
Okay.
And we looked at one that would, that we've deemed that is gonna best fit Rock Ridge and it integrates with Schoology. So some of the other programs, they're standalones. They're, they don't integrate well with some of the learning management systems.
Okay.
And then it was Stephanie and I and Bill Bryson.
Okay, thank you for that. So, okay, let me think of my last, my other question, it went away for a minute. What would this look like then if we adapted this? Like, how would this work for kids? That they would, they would, this program, they would access it at home? They would be at the school? Or how would that work?
Yes. Depends. Some students could be considered like dual-enrolled. So they may be taking one online class or two online classes and taking classes at the high school, you know? So we would have areas like in the learning commons where that they could work on their classes up in there. Or if they had a first or seventh hour, they could go home and do their coursework. So there'd be some students that'll stay online full-time. There'll be other ones that because of a scheduling issue or because they wanna do this class online, they'll be able to do that.
So it can be individualized?
Oh, yeah.
Per student?
Yeah. And the greatest thing is that, and this is a plug for all those people we want back to our online program, you're able to participate in our clubs and our sports and our athletic teams by choosing Wolverine Online versus going, being full-time online to other places.
That's another question I had. So kids that aren't in our district physically, can they come to online on Rock Ridge, just like they come to school?
We are, our first part of this is to get it set up for students here. And eventually, we're gonna have it where students from other districts, it's called supplemental learning, they'll be able to take classes through us.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had another question. So let me just think about it for one second here. What was it? So who would keep track of these kids? And would they have like, there would, there would be, just like, how would it work? As far as like, would there be a teacher?
As your advisor?
Yeah, advisor, who's like making sure they're getting through the class or whatever?
They will have a teacher of record that is a Rock Ridge employee. So it'll be, it'll be very similar to that they're actually in class. That teacher's gonna be the one sending emails to parents, keeping tabs, making sure they're on pace in their classes and all that.
Okay, so there's a, yeah, the on pace. And then if, you know, like it just wasn't, then it would, it's kind of, okay.
Right now, some of the other programs, our teachers are all over the country.
No, I noticed like this program is just like, you know, like for me, it would be continuing ad and you just look at like a video and you, you know, I, there are programs that offer, you know, visual teachers or do you ever, you know, is that something that was thought about or kind of?
I've seen some of them and they call, they have like the talking head that they pop up throughout there. So this program integrates a lot of it. And for us, it's the first year we'll really see what it looks like live.
Okay. And then also, oh, gosh, I'm really bad with the questions tonight. I should have wrote these down because I cannot remember in my head. Shoot, I had it. I felt like it was a really good one, too. Darn.
You can always email afterwards.
Yeah, I just am trying to just like figure out how this, oh, like the subjects, what, what is, what were the kids learning? Or is it limited or is it?
I can, I'll send you a list of all the courses.
Okay.
And then just so you know, we're gonna also build in like a, like a trial for, say a student wants to do an online class. So they have two weeks to decide whether or not they wanna stay in that class or go back to a regular class. I don't want them to say, you, online, you have to stay. Because some students are gonna find after two days, that's not their learning style. And we'd be able to create the flexibility, they could just go back into a traditional classroom.
I have a question also. And is there any cost to families if they're gonna be doing this?
Zero.
Zero cost. Okay.
Zero cost.
What about the success rate of this particular program?
There, I've reached out to colleagues that are using the program, like Grand Rapids is now, they're voting right now to have approval for their school district up here. And I know another one, St. Francis, they're switching over to this. So there's a lot of communities that are switching to this one.
And I believe North Branch, I saw last night.
Yep, North Branch has that too, yes.
Thank you for answering all my questions.
No problem. Yes, yes.
Any other questions, Scott? Scott? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Consider approval of facility used agreement between Rock Ridge Public School and North, or Minnesota North College for fall twenty-five, spring twenty-six seasons. Got a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Lotteger?
I'll second.
Second by Wesby. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Six point three, designate school board members to sit on the ASME Labor Relations Committee as per the ASME contract. I don't know if there's, if we wanna wait, or is everybody here to do this or?
This, it's up to you. But we do need two volunteers to be on this committee. It's in the ASME contract. So, and it'd be similar to the teacher one, meet occasionally, quarterly, something like that. And then ASME would talk directly to you and they could say whatever they wanted. And then you could hear directly from ASME members what it was. So you can decide tonight or you could wait another school board meeting. It's your call.
Or we could nominate Tim and Jennifer?
I think.
That'd be great. I mean, I think in the past, hasn't it, hasn't it pretty much been the same people as the, the, and Minnesota negotiations?
This is new. The ASME component is new. So you, the board members have not done this in the past. Teachers, yes. And I know various board members over the years have had different meetings with various ASME people over different topics. And there's always been a negotiating component. And there's always been a negotiating component. But this particular one is not a negotiation committee. It is specific.
When do negotiations start?
They have started. We had our first meeting with ASME, the School Board Negotiating Committee. And with the teacher group, we've had a meeting with them also, several meetings with them.
Does anybody here, does anybody here feel like volunteering for this?
I do think that, you know, that we're doing a disservice to Jennifer and Tam by not having them, you know.
So table it.
Table it.
Let's table it. That works.
You want two weeks?
Yep, your choice.
Okay.
Or could we, I mean, could you email everyone and ask for volunteers though? And then we can?
We just thought, what, in two weeks, hopefully we have a full, a full board.
All right.
6.4 Consider Approval of Memorandum of Understanding Between Arrowhead Head Start and Rock Ridge Public Schools for Services Provided July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, '26. This is an annual one we have. I get a motion?
Solved.
Motion by Lotteger. Support by Culver Dahl. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Meeting announcements, next regular meeting will be Monday, September 22nd, 6 o'clock at the Rock, Rock Ridge Public, uh, Badminton Building. Can I get a motion, teacher?
Solved.
Motion by Lotteger. Second by Wesby. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.